Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
And Mayor Collins.
I'm assuming I'm here. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during your meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge. Our minutes from January 4th, January 8th, and January 17th were received. Do we have any corrections or anything? Okay, then the minutes will stand as submitted. Commissioner Dean, would you please take over the presentation of the firefighters?
I will, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have the confirmation of Eric Dunn and Anna Peabody, and I will look to Chief Campbell to make their presentation, and then we'll do their oath.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners.
Good evening.
Tonight, we present Anna Peabody and Eric Dunn. They've completed their one-year probationary period. Per Montana law, need a vote of confirmation from the City Commission. Eric Dunn, originally from New Jersey, came to Montana joining the Forest Service as a wildland firefighter. Eric completed his fire science degree here in Helena and is working on a graduate certificate in emergency management. He's joined tonight by his fiancee Kayla and some of her family. Anna Peabody, originally from Maine, came to Montana by way of Colorado with her husband Mike in 2018. Anna worked as an EMT for St. Peter's Ambulance for four years, eventually earning her paramedic license. If you would please, Mayor Pro Tem. She'll come around and you guys can, she'll speak in here and you guys can stand together.
Would you please raise your right hand? Aye, your name.
Aye.
Recognize my obligation as a firefighter for the City of Helena
Recognize my obligation as a firefighter for the City of Helena.
To protect and preserve life and property
Protect and preserve life and property.
Of the public I serve.
The public I serve.
And I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Montana.
The Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of Firefighter
The duties of the Office of Firefighter.
For the City of Helena Fire Department
For the City of Helena Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And before we move to our next item, I'd like to give the Commission the opportunity to give any comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, appreciate that. To the new firefighters, welcome. Thank you for your sacrifice and for your commitment to the City of Helena. And also too, welcome to Montana. Glad you chose us and that you're working with the City of Helena.
Thank you. Congratulations to you both. I appreciate your stepping forward and your service. It's a great department and it's a great career path, as you all are aware, and enjoy your next 20 to 30 years.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations and welcome.
And I know that you've gone to your seat, but would either of you like to say any words before we move to our next agenda item?
Yeah, I want to say something.
Mayor Collins.
I want to congratulate our new firefighters, and we look forward to working with you and for you, and we're just happy that you chose Helena to be your home station. So, thank you so much. And I also want to thank the families who have supported you through all of this. Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we need a motion to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Commissioner Logan.
I would move to approve the confirmation of firefighters Peabody and Dunn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Consider confirmation of Officer John Strandberg. Chief Petty?
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Mayor Pro Tem, Commission. Tonight, I have Officer John Strandberg here. He has successfully completed his one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of the probationary period, and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. And if the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the Commission to confirm this officer tonight. Prior to the Commission vote, and if you may, I'll just provide a brief background on Officer Strandberg here.
Please.
Officer John Strandberg was born and raised in Boring, Oregon. No, I did not make that up, I looked it up. While in Oregon, Officer Strandberg volunteered as a volunteer firefighter and worked at Emergency Medical Services. He earned an Associate Degree in Fire Suppression and his National Registry Paramedic License. Upon moving to the Helena community, he continued to work as a paramedic. And then prior to coming to work for the Helena Police Department, Officer Strandberg served on the HPD LCSO SWAT team as a medic. Officer Strandberg is joined tonight by his wife Cody and their two children, Charlotte and Henry. Officer Strandberg's wife is also a member of the Helena Police Team, as she is one of our records clerk in our records section. She just started in November. So, welcome again, Cody. And with that, I'd like to welcome Officer John Strandberg, Cody and his family to the Helena PD family. And if you don't mind, if Officer Strandberg could say a few words to the Commission?
Oh. A few words. I want to thank you guys for your consideration for continuing my employment with the Helena Police Department and for, I want to thank Chief Petty for allowing me the opportunity to serve thus far. And most importantly, I want to thank my family for the support that they have given me getting to this point. It's not been easy on them, but they have been wonderful. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And so tonight, with that said, I'm looking for a motion or to approve the confirmation of this officer.
Any Commission comments?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Logan.
Just would like to thank Officer Strandberg for stepping forward and I wish you the best of luck in your career.
I will echo those comments. My words for this evening are congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
I also want to congratulate Officer Strandberg for choosing Helena, and we commend his family for the support they have provided him. So, congratulations to you and the rest of the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Welcome, and thank you for your service to you, your wife and your children, and thank you for their sacrifice, and welcome aboard.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the confirmation of Officer John Strandberg.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Any final Commission discussion? I'll just say, very excited that you joined the City of Helena and the Helena Police Department, and excited for your career ahead. So, with that, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Board appointments.
Thank you.
Okay. Good board appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisor Board, Citizen Conservation Board. I am recommending the following board appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Reappointment of Riley Hanson to a second term on Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as Community Member Representative of Housing Insecurity. Term will expire January 31st, 2027. Reappointment of John Roush to a second term on Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a real estate sector representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2027. Reappointment of Michael O'Neil to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a nonprofit housing sector representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2027. Citizens Conservation Board. Appointment of Betsy Adams to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February 28th, 2026. Appointment of Peter Dudley to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February 28th, 2027. Appointment of Brian Murphy to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February 28th, 2027. Helena Public Arts Committee. Reappointment of Helen Paulson to a first term on the Helena Public Arts Committee. Term will expire December 31st, 2026. Appointment of Rebecca Shaw Kinoz to an interim term on the Helena Public Arts Committee. Interim term will expire December 31st, 2024. Appointment of Emily Harris to an interim term of Helena Public Arts Committee. Interim term will expire December 31st, 2025. City-County Consolidated Parks Board. Appointment of Kara Auburn to an interim term to the City-County Consolidated Park Board as a city appointee. Interim term will expire September 30th, 2024. City-County Consolidated Planning Board. Appointment of Cheyenne Villo to an interim term on the City-County Consolidated Planning Board as a city appointee. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2024. City Planning Commission. Appointment of Ann Schwinn to a first term on the City Planning Commission. Term will expire May 17th, 2026. Appointment of Lucy Richards to a first term on the City Planning Commission. Term will expire May 17th, 2026. Railroad Urban Renewal District TIF Advisory Board. Appointment of Megan Malkin to Railroad Urban Renewal District Advisory Board as the representative of the business within the district. Term is non-expiring. Tourism Business Improvement District. Appointment of Ashley Drain to a first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2026. Appointment of Philip Swafford to a first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2026. Appointment of Holly Farrell to a first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2027. Zoning Commission. Appointment of Mark Rundy to an interim term on the zoning commission as alternate member. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2025. Commissioners? Any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Please.
If a motion was to be made, this might be for the City Attorney. If a motion was to be made, does this whole thing need to be read? Is it one motion?
Yeah.
You sound different, City Attorney.
So, are you backing up on a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the board appointments of the following. The reappointment of Riley Hanson to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a community member representative of the housing insecurity. Term will expire January 31st, 2027. The reappointment of John Roush to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a real estate sector representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2027. The reappointment of Michael O'Neil to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Board as a nonprofit housing sector representative. Term will expire on January 31st, 2027. The appointment of Betsy Adams to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. The term will expire February 28th, 2026. The appointment of Peter Dudley to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February 28th, 2027. The appointment of Brian Murphy to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February 28th, 2027. The reappointment of Helen Paulson to a first full term on a Helena Public Art Committee. Term will expire December 31st, 2026. The appointment of Rebecca Shaw Kinoz to an interim term on the Helena Public Art Committee. Interim term will expire December 31st, 2024. The appointment of Emily Harris to the interim term on the Helena Public Art Committee. The interim term will expire December 31st, 2025. The appointment of Kara Auburn to an interim term on the City-County Consolidated Parks Planning Board, or the Parks Board, as a city appointee. Interim term will expire September 30th, 2024. The appointment of Cheyenne Villo to an interim term on the City-County Consolidated Planning Board as a city appointee. Term, interim term will expire September 1st, 2024. Appointment of Ann Schwinn to a first term on the City Planning Commission. Term will expire May 17th, 2026. Appointment of Lucy Richards to a first term on the City Planning Commission. Term will expire May 17th. Appointment of Megan Malkin to the Railroad Urban Renewal District TIF Advisory Board as a representative of a business within the district. Term is non-expiring. Appointment of Ashley Drain to the first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2026. Appointment of Philip Swafford to a first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2026. Appointment of Holly Farrell to a first term on the Tourism Business Improvement District. Term expires June 30th, 2027. And appointment of Mark Rundy to an interim term on the zoning commission as an alternate member. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I think we're ready for the roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Madam Clerk.
And public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online, and no one in the room appears to be here to make public comment on this item.
Yes, do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay.
Shall I take the roll?
Please, would you please?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, consent agenda. Claims. Claims paid on 11/28/23, 11/29/23, 11/30/23, 12/1/23. Checks numbered 197336, 197424, and EFTs numbered 121, 122, for a total of $720,693.48.
Mayor.
Claims paid on 12.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Sheila Danielson. I'm not sure. Typically, you ask me to come up and read the memo, so I'm happy to do so for you.
Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, tonight we have before you on the consent agenda, claims. Claims paid from December 1st, 2023 through December 29th, 2023. Checks numbered 197336 to 197847, and EFTs numbered 121 through 136 for a grand total of $3,515,768.46. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda, item A, claims, as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commissioners, any proposals, communications?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we're coming up on an important anniversary, I guess we could say. Our city manager is nearing his annual, well, his anniversary of his official hire. And given that, I think, you know, one of the things that the Commission needs to do is an evaluation of his performance, and I think maybe if the Commission is interested, perhaps at the next administrative meeting, we can get the ball rolling and discuss directions, set directions so that we can conduct that evaluation.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think that's a good direction and will give us an opportunity to discuss the format in which we conduct the annual review.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement as well. I think this is, it'll be a good opportunity to discuss options moving forward, and I appreciate Commissioner Logan taking the ball and running with it.
Mr. Mayor, that is all, thank you.
I'm sorry, guys, you're breaking up on my end. I can't hear anything, and so.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have in my comments this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Reporter of the City Attorney?
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Reporter of the City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Chairman Kuiper, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have anything to report tonight either, so unless there's any questions, I'll yield. Thank you.
Okay. Regular items. Hazardous Material Response Grant and Training Grant Award from the Montana DES to the Regional Hazardous Material Response Team Helena Fire Department. Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Montana Disaster and Emergency Services is the grant administrator for FEMA funds for Montana's six regional hazardous materials response teams, one of which is the Helena Fire Department. Each of the six teams are set to receive $80,000 over two years. Montana DES is also a minister of the Hazmat Emergency Preparedness Grant, for which the Helena team is seeking Commission approval of $6,250 to cover hazmat response training. Helena's hazmat response team is requesting the approval of two grants at once, and that's the nature of this agenda item for you this evening. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Please go ahead.
Thanks. So, Chief, can you, you're gonna have to refresh my memory. From what I recall, some of, there was funding that the state used to provide for hazmat capabilities that maybe no longer exist anymore unless it hasn't been revived through this. And then my second question was, how does this work with, because it is a, part of the hazmat apparatus is in Montana City, I believe, because we don't currently have the facilities in town to house it, which is why, another reason we need a third fire station. But can you confirm that that's accurate in any other context you can give?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, that's correct. The origin of the hazmat funds from the state of Montana came after 9/11, where there were some federal grant monies that were made available for a broad spectrum of programs, including disaster and emergency preparedness as well as hazardous material response. Those federal funds, through the years, were diminished and ultimately dried up. Our strategic partners in DES have done an excellent job about seeking out additional grant funding opportunities, but we don't have the same annual infusion of funds that we did in years past. So, this is a reflection of that partnership with DES and the six regional teams in having a two-year span of grant money, which is designed to help the department run a hazmat team, materials, upkeep of tools, equipment, as well as training. So, that's the intention of these funds. I'm sorry, did you have a second part of that question that I missed?
Yeah, well, just with the materials for this are housed in Montana City, and I guess, does that impact how we do any training or impact it at all, I guess?
As for, Mr. Mayor, Commission, as far as an impact on the grants, no, there isn't. It is time impact in terms of our ability to deploy quickly and to gain access to that equipment, but part of these grant funds help make sure our personnel are equipped and ready, including on city engines that are housed in. and ready, including on city engines that are housed in city fire stations.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve the hazardous materials response grant award and hazardous materials training symposium grant award.
Second.
The move and seconded. Any other comments from the Commission or the public? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, is that a call for public comment or is that a call for the roll?
Do we have any comments from the public?
I do not have any public comment online and there appears to be no one on the chambers for comment this evening.
Okay. Seeing none? Would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
MOU with Lewis and Clark County, Montana Opiates Abatement Trust Metro Region Governance Structure. Grants Administrator Amanda Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Before you this evening is an MOU draft with Lewis and Clark County regarding the Montana Opioid Abatement Trust or Mote, Regional Governance Structure. The Montana Opioid Abatement Trust was established as part of a multi-state settlement with pharmaceutical companies related to the opioid epidemic. The Trust Advisory Committee is tasked with working alongside the multi-county, of which there are nine regions and the metro regions, excuse me, five counties, nine metro regions, to facilitate and distribute the opioid settlement funds for the opioid abatement trust. These efforts include expanding access to addiction treatment, recovery services, supporting prevention and education programs, and funding law enforcement and public safety initiatives. So, each abatement region is required to create a governance structure that will be responsible for reviewing and recommending projects to the trust. The city and county have come together with this draft MOU to establish this governance structure for our metro region. The MOU creates a five-person review committee, which includes an elected official from the Lewis and Clark County governing body, an elected representative from the City of Helena governing body, an elected representative from the City of East Helena, a community member that resides within Lewis and Clark County that will be appointed by the Lewis and Clark County Board of County Commissioners, a county member, excuse me, a community member that resides within the City of Helena that will be appointed by the City of Helena's mayor. A committee chair will be selected by the committee on an annual basis. And the city and county will both provide administrative support as needed for this board. The MOU will remain in effect for three years or as permitted, based on the renewal of the Mote funding that's available for our abatement area. I will note that the County Board of Commissioners has already approved this and signed it last Thursday. If you have any questions, other than that, that's everything from me.
Comments or questions from Administrator Opitz from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I will move to approve the Montana Opioid Abatement Trust Metro Region Governance Structure Memorandum of Understanding with Lewis and Clark County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final comments or discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Briefly, our sister city to the east has named today Rick Pfeifer Day, January 22nd, the 22nd being his football number when he played football. He is a notable business owner, was a notable business owner, and volunteer Helena ambassador. He was, did a lot for East Helena and Helena and for our community. He passed away a few weeks ago and just wanted to recognize that here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate your sentiments. Do we have any other comments from the Commission? Any final comments? Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned.